We'll call the meeting ordered, please stand for the part of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will call who?
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salasweal.
Here.
Mayor Doris Atson and Mayor Proton Canfield.
Here.
And I'll make the motion to approve the absence of Mayor Doris.
I'll support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda. We do have one change we need to add, the audit is item five E under new business. And there was one change I saw in the minutes from last meeting, under board and commission reports, we put Commissioner Canfield speaking about the light and power meeting, that was actually Marty. The only correction I had.
And with those changes, I suggest we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Motion in support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, because that's bills, I guess so you do a roll call on that, I'm sorry.
Mayor Proton Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor Doris Atson, Councilmember Salasweal.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Alright, that brings us to item three, citizen comments for items not on the agenda. The Help Yourself Garden is not on the agenda for discussion tonight and has only recently come to the attention of the city council. Personally, I think the concept is great, but now we have complaints from the neighbors that we need to respond to and investigate. I spent about an hour yesterday on Labor Day talking with Laura and Tom who run the garden, and I knocked on the door of all five occupied homes on the street and was only able to speak with one homeowner who had traffic concerns, trying to find a solution that could be worked out. If there are determined to be zoning or ordinance violations, hopefully we can find a workable solution for all parties involved. And with that, we'll open it to public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and we're limited to five minutes per person.
Hi, I'm Joshua Levan, this is my wife Ashley, we live at 125 South Grove Street in Lowell. Our main concern is we're all for the entire idea of giving and helping others, we do it every weekend when we attend a church. Our church as well has a garden, and it helps many people within the church and outside the church. Our biggest thing is the fact that we have a three-year-old and six-year-old little girls. And out playing, there's been increased traffic. Like I said, we're for the garden, we just don't believe the location is ideal. We moved here a little over eight years ago, and so we picked this spot because it was in a cul-de-sac, there's some outskirts of downtown Lowell, super quiet, but still within city limits, and we enjoy it. But with the traffic that's happening, strangers, you know, we don't know these people, we're just concerned for the safety of our children, and maybe we can find a different location for the garden, and we'd be all for that. If not, I don't know, maybe you will have to move. So yeah, thank you.
I wasn't gonna say anything, I thought this place would be packed out. Heather Dilly. I just, I hear that once, I too live on a cul-de-sac, and when things happen, it's crazy, there's so many solutions, there's parking somewhere else, there's keeping hours, there's so many, so many solutions. So, I understand, wackadoodles come everywhere, all the time, they come to the East Gate sales, they come walking in your neighborhood, I get it, I get it, gotta protect your kids. This garden is amazing, yeah, I don't know what else to say, but there's so many solutions, that when I read this, and I heard this, and I wrote a note to Mr. Canfield, and I'm like, screw it, I'm just gonna go, because I just need to say it. Yeah, there's a lot of solutions. And that's all I'm gonna say, thank you.
Heather, can we get your address, we've got your name, but not your address?
Thank you. That's scary, I live in Lowell, 1773 Woodland Court, now I'm township, so therefore, can I not talk?
No.
Okay, that was the other thing too, like, you're township.
Community, we're a community here. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Parker Lewin, this is my wife Chelsea, we reside at 903 North Monroe Street, and I'm here speaking tonight in support of Laura and Tom Rhodes and Help Yourself Community Garden. Chelsea and I are lifelong members of the Lowell community, we graduated from Lowell High School in 2010, and we decided to move back and start our own family in this community after leaving for college. One of the biggest draws to Lowell was the community-level effort to truly make Lowell the next place to be. After the most recent recession, Chelsea and I worried that Lowell would never return to where it was. Seeing the development of new businesses, continued growth of the surrounding community, and new ideas coming to life, like the Help Yourself Garden only solidifies our decision to return to Lowell. Chelsea has been involved with the Help Yourself Garden since its inception earlier this summer. As a family, we not only use some of the gardens to make some wonderful meals at our own home, but we've been able to share the extreme excess that's come out of our own garden with others through the food garden itself. In its short existence, the Help Yourself Garden has already made a positive impact on the community, and given us another way for us to connect with our neighbors. I believe the collaboration with Girl Scout Troop 4129 and the development of the Give and Take Farm Stand is an example of wider collaboration that shows additional benefit of the garden being on its stated purpose. As an Eagle Scout from Troop 102 and a member of the Lowell United Methodist Church, I see many of our friends and neighbors need help, including finding a sustainable, affordable source of healthy food, I believe your Help Yourself Garden is helping to address this issue. As the current issues came to light with the initial notice of code violation served to Laura last week, I became, started to become upset that her neighbors and city may think so poorly of this project. Some of the concerns raised surrounded a one-time gathering to celebrate the Give and Take Farm Stand and the continued development of the property to further enhance the garden. After reading the statement from our city manager Mike Burns, and through the Lowell First Look Facebook page, I now believe the city of Lowell does understand the benefit of the garden, and wants to find a way to make this work. While understanding that some of my fellow citizens have concerns about traffic safety and appearances of the property, and as the 2018 growing season nears to an end, I believe now's the time to address some of the issues raised by the city and build on the compromises that were offered. I'd like to request that Laura and Tom are allowed to continue to operate the Help Yourself Garden and the Give and Take Farm Stand until the end of October, to allow for the fall growing season to conclude, additional crops like carrots, pumpkins, and squash aren't quite done yet, so they might still need a little bit more time for us to share. In addition, I would also encourage the city to have an open conversation with Laura and Tom about the overall appearance of the property in order to gain better understanding of if or how the garden can continue in its current location. I would also encourage the city to keep an open mind about moving the garden to one of the proposed locations mentioned in the statement, or finding another compromise that'll allow the garden to operate within city codes. We also want to do all of this while maintaining the central spirit and goal of the project, which is providing and sharing healthy food choices to the Lowell community at no charge. As a proud citizen of the Lowell community, I hope that communication between the city government and its citizens can continue to be improved. After reading the letter written to Laura about the violations in question, I found myself questioning what problems exactly the city wanted addressed. As a part of that, I live, where I live, there's an abandoned house next door to me at my property that they mowed along once or twice a year, but it's basically abandoned and ruined, and there's nothing we can do, we feel like, to try and have that addressed as a problem, so, kind of addressing, saying that if there's a problem that needs to be brought up so that it can be addressed, there's a problem, and I just haven't brought it up, so I apologize for that, but I do understand the appearance issue for sure. After, as my understanding, it took a request for comment from the Lowell First Look News organization in order to receive a proper response to questions about the code violations that were identified. If a concern citizen, if a concern is raised by a citizen, I believe it's the government's responsibility to provide a reasonable and easy-to-understand response in a timely manner. I hope that the Lowell community continues to grow to be the next place to be, and continue to be the next place to be, and I hope that we can grow as a community through this difficult situation. Thank you for your time tonight. Oh, the last thing I wanted to mention, there's a lot of people that are in support of the garden and supportive of what Laura and Tom are doing, and they brought these flowers in support for them, but to show that there are even more people beyond who is able to come tonight to the meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Vesino, I live at 889 Flat River in Virginstown Township. We've both, Mary and I, donated to and picked from the garden many times over the last few months. With the local volunteers and the Girl Scouts, the garden has always looked in really great shape. Several times when we stopped by, we were the only ones there, I usually park on Main Street as it's easier to get out, to go back home. We feel the accusations of unkept garden and excessive traffic are completely unfounded because we've never seen it anytime that we've been there. The only times that there might have been multiple vehicles on the street was when print and TV media were there to do stories on the garden. And during the dedication of the Girl Scout Farm Stand that they built for the garden. This is a portable structure and not a building as the city suggests, this is a valuable community resource and should be saved. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Adra, I live at 112 East Main. I speak for my daughter, I speak for myself, and for the community, and Mrs. Atten, the principal of Cherry Creek, had presented a letter that she wanted read for her because she couldn't be here tonight, and she ordered it to me. Says, "Dear Rachel, I wanted to share with you how impressed I've been with Ada's leadership and maturity thus far this school year. She has shown patience, kindness, and to fellow students, and is always ready to help. Today she cheerfully helped set up for an assembly and took on a leadership role with it. Teachers have been positive about her school attitude, we are seeing a difference in her behavior, as for the better. When talking to her about the summer, she shared, 'I think I became a better leader because of the garden project.' It is so proud of what this..." Mrs. Atten looked in the video with the Girl Scouts and with her work with the garden, and also read the ledger story about the garden, and Ada's worked with it. Ada seems very excited that we knew about this at school. I wanted to know, I wanted you to know that we see the leadership skills she gained over the summer. The garden project was a fantastic experience for her, I wish we could offer the same type of experience at school for others. We appreciate how you have encouraged her involvement, she's, you know, talking to the parents for me. In the garden, skills learned there are showing at school. So in my perspective, she leads and waters the garden, she keeps it up, she's involved, she's learning that, you know, it's more, it's more about helping one another and being a true community, and what it means to give and take, and even though there's imperfections with other people's opinions about what's going on, overall, the generosity and the overflow, and the giving and the taking is very acceptable, is very appropriate, the project I really feel needs to stay, not just for myself, but for everybody. So, I give it. Would you like a copy?
Sure.
I have one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicola Rince, I am a business owner here in Lowell at 318 East Main. I've also been involved and lived in Lowell for the last thirty years or so, recently moving out to Saranet, but still very active in the community. I look at this from a little bit of a different perspective, I constantly see new people coming into Lowell. This is a wonderful place to move to, and this garden adds to that. I love being able to brag about this town and tell them just how wonderful my kids do in the schools here, and how much this community helps and supports each other. New people are not a scary thing, and unfortunately, with living on a public road, you can't always control the traffic that comes down it, there are plenty of private drives and HOAs that are available for you if you guys, you know, don't enjoy that type of environment, but the city is a place where people are going to come to, and it's not necessarily a bad thing, and I think that after reviewing the zoning ordinance, there's just not a violation here. I think this is a great benefit for our community, and I'm proud to say that I am from this town, and I hope that this continues. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Miles, I live at 3466 Firefly Lane, Lowell. I've been here for eight years now, recent, I moved here from a big city, and I really enjoy here at Lowell, the people are very, very nice, easy to get along with, and I myself have been a volunteer there, I was there from day one, putting it together, planting the plants, the mulch, basically all the labor that goes into it. I am very, I guess, appalled that we have to go through this, I believe it's a very great asset to Lowell, and being out there in the area where I live, it's nice to be able to go there and get some vegetables and herbs instead of having to go all the way on the other side of Lowell to Myers. I also have given to the garden quite often, so I believe this is really a great asset to Lowell. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Henry, I live at 1800 West Main Street, Lot 15. Last summer, my husband and I came on vacation here, and we decided Lowell was the next great place to live, and we moved here, we've been here just a year now, the 28th of August. Some of what drew me to this community is that it is still community active, there's always something to do, and that there's so much community togetherness, and I've never experienced that, even when I've lived in smaller towns before, there's so much, that I just feel that we all come together as a team, and I think we can come together as a team on this. My husband is disabled, has been for four years, and so I'm the only breadwinner in our house, and he needed to lose weight in order to have a necessary surgery. Through eating fresh vegetables along with other dinners, and if you've ever tried to diet, trying to make diet food not taste like cardboard is not always that, you know, easy, but with the herbs and the vegetables and the things that I have learned from Tom and Laura about what to cook and how to cook it, and, you know, we each lost over forty pounds this year, now of course that wasn't just since this summer, but it has helped. And now my husband is gonna be having his surgery in the next month, and I honestly feel that is in part due to the fact that we're eating vegetables, some of them I hadn't even heard before, I just went to three stores to try and find a fennel bowl, I didn't know what a fennel bowl was a year ago, and, you know, I wouldn't have known had I not, not only just been able to get three vegetables, but have somebody help me understand, to educate me, and I do feel this is an important part of our community, I want it to continue to be a part of the community. Where is that, because it is handy for the residents, not someplace where we all gotta drive to, and this, it's right here. I understand, living on a cul-de-sac, the times I've been out there, the only child I've ever seen is Ada and one other friend, and my grandchildren, that doesn't mean they don't go out there and play, I understand they're not there all the time, but I haven't just seen a wealth of traffic on that cul-de-sac, and if it's because we need to park on Main Street and walk a little distance, hey, I could use the exercise, I'm all for that too, but I do feel this is adding community togetherness and adding years to myself and my husband's life. Thank you.
Hi, we're on 7 East Main Street, I have three children that are five and under, we live just two blocks away, so we like to walk down and just kinda see what's going on, and pick some nice fresh vegetables, we suddenly love going there and getting squash, squash maniacs, so, three years ago, we moved to Lowell because, you know, when we ask people, "What do you think about Lowell?", they're all like, "It's a great place, there's always stuff happening, things are great." I think that this garden is exactly what Lowell is, and so I am all for the garden. Thank you.
I'm Liz Sparks, and I live at 257 Dollar Drive, and I have to tell you, I am appalled that we're even having this conversation. I've lived in Lowell since 1973, I live in Valley Vista, and I, I shouldn't say this in public, but I very rarely lock my door, and I understand your concern with your little children, and that, I agree with the other gal, if we need to park on Main Street to use the garden, I'm all for that, but I think this is exactly what Lowell needs. I have to say that I think that we should all be, that the people that are complaining about this, and every one of you at the table should be ashamed of yourselves, because Lowell is a great place to live, and we are better than this. And I hope that the garden stays. I was appalled to read that it said that it was unkept, I've never seen it unkept. If you wanna see something unkept, please take the drive down Sibley and Church Street, and look at that vacant lot that the church used to own, the grass has gotta be up to my knees. So if it takes a complaint to have something done about the grass being mowed, or something unkept, then I'm here to complain that that needs to be mowed, it hasn't been mowed in weeks. My neighbors have two, and this is in their front yard, it's not between the sidewalk and the, and the street, but they have two huge raised beds, I guess you'd call it, and they're tears down in their front yard, and they have vegetables growing out there in their front yard. Is that against the city ordinance?
No, it's not.
Okay. Again, I just tell you that I'm just appalled that we're even here because Lowell is better than this, and I hope the garden stays, and I think that if it were to move, as the Facebook page suggested, to the library or to Creekside Park, I don't think that it would be used as much as it is now, because now we have someone there to talk to, Laura will come out and talk to us, I've taken things there to give away, and I, you know, picked a few things, and I have my own vegetables in my own backyard, so I don't need that, but I love the idea that it's there for people who want it and need it, and I don't think that we would get that personal touch, I don't think it would be used as much as it is now if you move it outside the residential area. So, again, I'm appalled, I wish we weren't having this conversation, and I just hope the garden stays, so, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Roger Koleski, live at 612 North Houston with my wife Jane, we've been there since seventy-nine, the summer of seventy-nine. Going to change gears here for just a second, two things, first of all, we wanted to say how much we love the new surface on Hudson Street, man, that's nuts. The, the second thing I wanted to talk about is the incessant speeding up and down Hudson Street. Now that it's been resurfaced, it's, it's still going on, but it's just quieter. We have, back in the spring, I wrote a letter, well, first of all, this started last summer about this time, I spoke with a gentleman from the Interpolice Station, and they had a, they asked if they could put a speeding machine on my yard, and I said, "Of course you can." And so later that day in the evening, about this time, he came back, took a look at the computer inside the machine, and reported to me that just that day, there were over seven thousand cars that passed my house on Hudson Street, and he also confided in me, saying that almost everyone was speeding. So I guess I'm here just to urge the council to please, please, can you do something about the speeding? I did write a letter to Diane Jones, who is the county commissioner for, I think it's the fourth district here for Lowell, and then she also fired off a copy of that letter to a gentleman by the name of Stephen Warren from the Road Commission here in Kent County, and he responded to me also, and I have copies of that letter if you would care to have it. But, like I said before, it's, the speeding is continuing, you know, pick a time, pick an hour, you know, seven o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the afternoon, right now, people are just flying up and down that road, and especially some of the larger trucks, tractor-trailer trucks coming down the road. So, again, I'd just like to urge the council, please, can you, can you help us with the speeding on Hudson Street?
Okay.
Would you care to have the letter, or no?
Yeah, I would take it.
Sure.
The electronic speed signs arrived today, and I spoke to Steve Donner so that earlier, and they're gonna be installed hopefully later this week.
This is the letter I wrote, this is the letter I'm just gonna send.
Steve, quick question, what were those signs that you posted that you're speeding? Was it thirty, twenty-five, thirty?
It's twenty-five, they're there, so it'll remind them, it's twenty-five, no flash, they're over there.
Thank you.
Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside, and yes, traffic does on Hudson, I did find that if I drive twenty-five miles an hour, make sure that I do, it slows a lot faster down behind you, so I, so I think we can all help in that is by making sure that we go twenty-five miles an hour. Something different that I'm coming to you for, and I kinda want your guidance, or I want your endorsement is what I want, is I've been working up on, by the cemetery in my business, and every time I go by, there's a section of the northwest corner of the cemetery that is used, and understandably, that there's brush there that's stored there, there's gravel, stones, and I've got pictures to show you, there's actually four or five bags, plastic bags there, and everything, and what I'm proposing is, I would like to take on the project to, and I've estimated the cost of between four and five thousand dollars, to put a fence, six-foot-high fence along that back section that would then screen that debris and everything from the rest of the cemetery, and I've, you know, I've estimated the cost, there's about three hundred and sixty feet of fence that would be needed, and my idea is to go to community members, my father, my father's buried there, my grandfather, and I would donate, I would buy a section, there's a hundred dollars for a section, and then we could put a plaque or on each section or on one, and I think that there's enough people in the community that have family that reside at Oakwood Cemetery that would go ahead and donate a hundred dollars to clean that up, and again, I would just, you know, before we go through that effort, I just wanna get a feedback from the city and the city council of what their thoughts of that, so.
You, Rich?
No, that area that you, that Perry's talking about is a compost pile, it's a brush pile, it's a rock pile, it's many things that come from operating a cemetery, and...
Right, I understand that.
I support that, that's a great idea, eventually it would probably become part of the cemetery though, as we run out of space, but certainly in the meantime, the fence would be, would be great.
Right, and I think at some point we have to negotiate with the neighbors and get more... And I think at some point, we have to negotiate with the neighbors and get more property to the north. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
Rich, would it be to move it further down, so as you expand it, you don't have to relocate the fence in 10, 20 years from now?
I think the problem is that we're getting to kind of an edge of a bank, and so that's why it's been located there. We certainly could condense it a little bit more to clean it up also, which would lessen the cost of the fence as well if we condensed it. So yeah, we'd be willing to work with Perry.
Great. Any other comments from the community?
Hello, I'm Tom Rhodes, I'm one of the hosts of the Help Yourself Garden. And Laura and I, when we first started this out, we reached out to the city, we looked at the city ordinance, and it actually mentions right in there that it supports gardens in the area. And so we feel we weren't doing anything wrong, all we were trying to do, and all we wanted to do, is be there to help the community, to get to know the community, and bring the community together by doing this. And I think we've done that. And I find it pretty hard, it's harder for me to come up here and speak about this without showing some anger, because it's very offensive, but what's going on here? And we'd like to continue to do with this, and I don't see why it can't happen. There's nothing that's been shown to me on anything, and I don't think a lawyer has seen anything, and I don't want it to come to that. But unfortunately, we're pushed, we are standing behind us, and we will take it as far as we mean. We hope the city doesn't make us go to that ground. And that's what Perry is asking, please don't push us. We just want to be there and support this community, and give them fresh food. I don't see anything wrong with it, I think it's all good, and I can't see why anyone would think any different. There may be a problem with traffic. I wish our neighbors would have came to us, and maybe we could have made some changes, but, you know, no one asked us, no one wanted to talk to us about it. Sorry about that. We'd like to help, we just want to keep doing this, what we're doing, and think it's different to me. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. I'm Laura Heathrods, and I'm also one of the co-hosts of the Help Yourself Garden. And it is with enormous love that I am here tonight, surrounded by comments swirling about my, our Facebook page even now, showing signs of incredible support for this project. But it's also with some incredible sadness that we also have to be here to talk about this. Like several people have said, this shouldn't even be a conversation that we're having now. This certainly should have been a conversation that happened out in the front yard, when neighbors had concerns, come down to talk with us and explore solutions. Multiple invitations to city officials to come see the place, and to neighbors to come explore what it was we were doing, and still, this is what it's come to. So, it makes me sad, but I also know that we have the community's support and backing of this project in incredible numbers. The reason that this garden is happening here is because it is allowed by law. The city code of ordinance is allows this garden to be exactly where it is and to be growing exactly how it is. And that is the fact, that's the law. It is not unkept, it is not dangerous, and it also causes maybe four, maybe five extra cars every day, some of which, as you've heard Mr., you know, say, he parks on Main Street, and so I think Kathy Humphrey would be willing to do that. It's a public street. I think one of the reasons, I think Liz brought this up, I think it was Liz, that this is successful is because I am at home during the day, and I can see who's out there, and I go out, and I greet as many guests as I can possibly greet if I'm not on a conference call or something. And the incredible education and community building that has happened in the short time that the garden has been open has been heartwarming, heartwarming. You heard earlier from the principal at the school how it's changed Ada's life. She's 11 years old, and this project will impact her for decades and decades to come. And there are going to be other children where they can say the same of a project like this. We said early on, when this project blew up on Facebook, we thought it was just going to be, you know, a little project, and the community went absolutely crazy when we put this up online, and it went viral. And I'm glad for it, because more free food and healthy food for people is nothing but a good thing. We said early on that we were interested in helping to replicate this project across the community. I'm all for that. What I'm not for is being told with a heavy hand that we need to remove this garden because it is unkept, when the city ordinance supports that we have it there. I will work with the city to make community gardens happen across this community. I'd love to see them in every single inch of every parkway in this community, and I will help you do that. But I will not take this garden out unless you can show me city code that supports it unequivocally that we need to do that. Today's comments found on Lowell's first look were the first time that the city communicated, city administration, I should say, communicated with me about any conversations going on about alternatives. First time. City's been invited down multiple times to see what's going on. We, when we opened the project up not long after, we invited you down to see what it was, and to talk you through what it was we were doing. As far as, maybe somebody drove by at some point, but never stopped to talk. I think that needs to change. I know some of you still don't understand what this is and haven't seen it. Please come down. I guarantee you'll leave with some fresh foods, and you'll probably leave with some recipes and ideas of how to cook some new things you probably haven't ever heard of or known about, like Kathy's new favorite food. So please, let's back off of the heavy-handed behavior. This garden isn't allowed use by law, let it continue, and let's replicate it across the community. Because if we want Lowell to be the next best place to be, this is one of the ways that we can make that happen. And so I invite an invitation to every single one of you, as well as all of our neighbors, to come down and hear what this garden is doing. Here are some of the people who come and visit. I've met so many incredible people from both the township and Lowell, as well as communities beyond, that have come to see what's going on. Lowell, we can do better than this. Let's work together to make this garden a success, and to make gardens like a success across the community. Thanks.
Can I say something? Hi, my name is Kristen Ryder. A lot of you know me as Kristen Hall, the head of the City Council.
Apologies.
No, no. I don't think anybody has a problem with the garden, but at the same point, it's not aesthetically appealing to everyone. I also agree with them, and for somebody, it was the business owner to say, "Then go find another home with an HOA." I felt very offended by that. Not to mention, both of you who talk about community, and trust me, I've been part of Lowell for a long time, it almost seemed like bullying, the way you spoke to the city council members. And I don't really know where that's coming from, when you want to claim that this is supposed to be such a great thing. That's all I wanted to say. Second of all, I think it's great to have a community garden, but why not have it in a place where more people could be a part of it? Thank you.
Anyone else? Last chance. All right, we are going to move on to item four.
I do have a letter to read in right now. To whom have concern in regards to the Lowell Help Yourself Garden, or if you have visited the Help Yourself Garden for the first time last week. Our kids were so excited to physically touch and fresh vegetables. They are able to try veggies they haven't had before, and even brought some, can't help home for our kitties. The garden is amazing resource for our community. Not only is it providing free, fresh food for families, but it has brought people from the community together. Please take into consideration the positive things the Help Yourself Gardens do for Lowell, and how beneficial it is for everyone. Thank you, Carrie Bracker.
Thank you, Sue. All right, we will move on to item four on the agenda, whole business. Mike?
Yes, I'm mayor for Tennessee Council. I don't have a memo written on this, but I do want to update you as to what has occurred with the vacancy of Jeff Van Setters, and what we were doing in the interim. As you all know, on Friday, Jeff Van Setters left the city of Lowell as the water and sewer distribution supervisor. This caused us to immediately address that issue, as under DEQ regulations, we have to have what is called an operator in charge of the distribution system, and that individual has to have currently an S2 license or higher. At this time, we have no employees on staff who have an S2. We have two with S3, one with the possibility of taking the S2 exam, but we haven't received definitive answers yet as to what's going to go with that. And we're also still researching a number of different items. So that being said, DEQ required that when, by the end of the day Friday, we had a new OIC in place, so we could be compliant with DEQ. So I reached out, the last two weeks I've reached out with City of Ionia, Village Saranac, Infrastructure Alternatives, the SUEZ, and Pride of New Hope, trying to find somebody to, somebody to assist us with this during this interim time. I was able to secure Pride of New Hope. Dan Sorek, the individual who came and spoke to you at the last committee of the whole meeting, he has an S1 license, and he would be stepping in for the next couple weeks while we get this matter sorted out, and he will be our operator, he'll be our operator in charge. There's, we're still internally evaluating how we're going to move forward with that service that we provide. But Dan will come on. Basically, what it entails is administrative tasks. Couple hours a week, coming in to making sure that everything we do is compliant with DEQ. Our employees who currently work at DPW now are going to continue to do the repairs, the, any type of meter changes, things that they're going to be doing, the people who are here are going to be doing that work, but DEQ just requires somebody to oversee the system. So, Dan has done it. I declared an emergency situation on Friday where I just went and instituted it, because I couldn't call special meaning of council to approve that, so I went and did it. The hourly, the hourly fee for Dan Sorek would be $122 an hour, and would only be on hourly when we need him. That being said, that's what we, that's what we entered. So, I've already gone forward for this, but I do need approval. I would like formal approval from the council to approve Dan Sorek, Dan Sorek from Pride of New Hope to be our operator in charge for the water distribution system for the interim period. We hope, we hope we have this matter resolved in the next six weeks. And we're still working on, we're still doing a lot of internal analysis, budgetary-wise, as to determine how we're going to move forward with the DPW in this area.
Just a general consensus, anyway?
I would prefer a vote, actually.
A vote? Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion then, that we approve Dan from Pride of New Hope to oversee the water treatment plan for the short term that is needed.
And our support? We have a motion in support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to new business. Larkin's Chili Cook-Off. If you want to approach the podium, Mike?
Hi, Larkin, 301 West Main. This is the 17th time I've shown up to the council to try and get you to close North Broadway for our Chili Cook-Off fundraiser. Last year, we got rained on pretty well, and the money was going to the showboat, so we're going to try and give it to the showboat, our renovation fund this year. Hopefully, we'll have nice weather and no rain. I mean, you know, we closed, we tried to close Broadway from Main Street to the alley at the post office, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and try to get the people out there, serve them chili, and have a good time, enjoy the harvest celebration that day. Looking for the council to approve we'll close the street for that day.
I'll make a motion that we quickly close North Broadway for the 17th annual?
Yeah, on October 13th.
On October 13th, for the 17th annual Chili Cook-Off.
I'll support. But I do have a question. Moving forward, is it necessary that we vote on this every year, and then just go get a permit from the, from the city to get it, so, you know, Mike doesn't have to show for the 18th one? I'm not sure what we're allowed to do.
You want to see it, Mike?
Yeah.
Every year, there's a little something more you have to do, as a form to fill out or something, so it's no, no big deal.
My understanding is that, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it does require a council, any road closure requires a council approval.
Any road closures.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in support. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to the LCTV distribution. You have a memo in your packet from Mike?
At the request of the LCTV Fund Advisory Committee, you have committed to giving them prior notice of the amount that will be available for distribution. I recommend that you make all of the spendable balance in the fund available to the committee so that you can receive their recommendations for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. My recommended motion is that the Lowell City Council authorizes all of the spendable balance of the LCTV fund for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year to be available for recommendations from the LCTV Fund Advisory Committee.
So move support. We have a motion in support. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to the Lowell Light and Power. MERS. Steve, if you want to fill us in on that?
Good evening. I'm here for a couple items this evening. Just over six years ago, Greg, I think you were there, at the August 9th, 2012 Regular Board Meeting of Light and Power, the board approved a resolution for the formation of a hybrid pension plan for all new hires effective September 1st, 2012. A hybrid pension plan is the combination of a defined benefit and a defined contribution, it's just a more affordable pension plan going forward. Since that time, all Light and Power new hires, both IBW and non-IBW staff have had enrolled in the hybrid plan. It's in Lowell Light and Power's handbook, it's in the IBW's contract, but just through a random conversation with MERS, they let me know that this actually needed to go to council for approval, because they're ahead of the entire MERS plan, and that was never done. So, MERS and I are recommending that the city council approve the hybrid resolution retroactive to September 1st, 2012, and this does not have any impact on Lowell Light and Power or city finances in what any means.
So how's the big, that's been going for six years, Steve? Good?
How's the hybrid been going?
Yeah, well, yes.
It's been going very well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hybrid adoption agreement and make it retro for 2012, Greg?
September 1st, 2012.
1st, 2012.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the regulator station pipeline easement. Steve?
Yes, included in your packet is the final proposed easement.